Knowing that their children and future generations aren't going to be poisoned in any way. And so I would implore all of you just to vote in favor of keeping our water, in my humble opinion, the greatest water on earth. Just please, thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Mike Selmer. I live at 1462 Indian Hills Drive. I wanted to point out, which is very obvious from the number of people here, that this is an issue that motivates people significantly. This is a workday, mid-morning, and there are a lot of people that sacrificed to be here. And I hope you take all of their opinions and views very seriously. I wanted to, on my own sake, say that it's very important that money not be the basis of every decision that we make. That the quality of life for our community is just as important as economic development. And sacrificing protections for the aquifer in order to provide more economic development needs to be very carefully considered because in the end, it will hurt all of us if the aquifer is harmed in any way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Martha Martinez Del Rio. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for having us speak. I would like to add my voice to the opinion expressed by the President. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Connor Mullen. I live in a small house at 511 South 12th Street. I'm a grad student, looking forward to May when I finally graduate. And I'm starting to think about what I'm going to do with my learning and where I'd like to do that. Laramie is currently my top pick, but today's decision on the comprehensive plan could certainly influence and change that. I've been following the issue for a few months now, and on more than one occasion, I've heard the officials here use a sort of because-because logic around the issue. The intersection of Grand and Blue Bear is a major intersection, and it ought to be developed because of that. While I think that they're right in one sense, it is a major intersection. I think that it is a major intersection in more than one way, and ought not to be developed because of that. Let me explain. It's a major intersection for automobile traffic, as you know, but below the surface, it's also an intersection for our water between the tops of those hills and city springs where we pull almost half of our drinking water. In those ways, it's a physical intersection, but with today's decision looming, it's also a bit of a socio-political intersection. Based on the way you decide today, you will influence the future of Laramie for good or bad. One way that I know today's decision will influence me is in thinking about my future. We've all heard the saying Wyoming's biggest export is its youth, and I think a lot of things go into making that disappointment a reality. Some of those things we can change, like policy, some of those things that we can't change, like the wind. But I think the issue on the table today affords us the choice how much we want that saying to remain true for Laramie specifically. Making a decision that values a single piece of privately-owned commercial development over the community's health and well-being is a decision that will inspire Laramie's younger population to go that much closer to researching the cost of living elsewhere. Making a decision that reinforces the idea that to be environmentally conscious is to be anti-business is a decision that will move Laramie's young families that much closer to calling relatives in other states to see what else is out there. Making a decision to amend the comprehensive plan in order to extend an individual's private property rights on or near the Casper Aquifer is a decision that will push yet another group of young people that much closer to leaving Wyoming. If you can't prioritize and protect one of the most basic human needs, then what's to keep us here? I would like to stay in Laramie and give back to a community that I love, but if I'm going to do that, I need some reassurance that my leaders are looking out for all of us and that they value stewardship in the same way that I do. If you take care of the land, the land will take care of you.
Just to show our hands, who's here in opposition to the amendment? Raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, commissioners, my name is Monica Linehaner. I am a community organizer for an organization, Powder River Basin Resource Council. My job is primarily to work with landowners that are impacted by different sorts of activities going around them. I just want to share a story from my work. I don't know if you know about the town of Pavilion, Wyoming, in central Wyoming, near Lander, a great rural community, a lot of great agricultural producers out there. There's been 13 years now of them living with polluted water. It is believed by some landowners there that that was caused by oil and gas activity. It's believed by others that it wasn't. Regardless, these people have water where you can hold a glass right here and you can smell the fumes coming off of it. A gentleman I know pretty well out there, his name's Louis Meets, he tells me that he thinks he's just waiting to die at this point because he can't sell his house, he has no options to leave. He showers in this water every day. Thankfully, the state has provided bottled water up till now. It's a huge part of their life where they can no longer live their livelihoods. They can no longer be the producers that have helped to make this state and to make this heritage that we all want to carry on today. So I just hope that the decisions you make, we won't look back and see that Laramie is a ghost town like Pavilion is because we didn't protect our most valuable resource here. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Good morning. Did you get those cookies? No, I didn't get them done. My job, I apologize.
I'm Denise Decker. I have an expert view anyway of these issues. I live in Nominee County, and I speak here as a member of the community. It is so heartening to see this room full and to see all people in the hallway because Laramie is an important issue to everyone. I'm not a native of Wyoming or of Laramie, but one of the things that's really impressed me about this town is the community and the sense of community. And I would want to encourage you to do two things to support the community. One is transparency in research information so that everything that is presented to this commission in evaluating these issues are presented on the website so that the community, the experts, the non-experts can all look at it in completion as the way you are so that we know what we're talking about and we can evaluate it expertly and personally. The other thing is I want to encourage everybody who's in the hallway, and there are a lot of them, to come up and add your voice. I encourage everybody who's sitting here to add your voice. Say I hear what I think matters. The community of Laramie matters, and water in the next 50 years and tomorrow is going to be the number one issue in this world. So let's protect what we have because it's one of the most valuable assets out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Come on up.
My name is John the Blue Bear. I'm Kishaya. I don't originate from this part of the country. I originate from California next to the water. You have this many people here because water is life. It is their life. They shouldn't be taxed to death for it. They shouldn't have to make a certain income to have it. Long ago before the settlers came, we all had water. We were alive. You three and whoever votes here today, you really need to think about it. You guys are already destroying the land with the fracking. You're already destroying your water with the fracking. Have you seen the cancer rise in this country? Sick and die. It's from our need and greed. It's what it's for. We think we need so many things, we do not need them. Takes two and a half barrels of clean, clean, your drinking water to make a barrel of oil. Does that sound smart? These people, so many people here, they're fighting for their life. That's why they're here. Life shouldn't be taken to a vote. You understand? I am Kishaya, but all people here on this land are my people, just like this land is my land. I will protect it. I am a water protector. I am a land defender. I am Kishaya. And I will continue to come into your courtrooms and to your courthouses to protect my people, all my people. Eat real good and hard. This isn't a money decision that you're making. This is a life decision you're making. I might tell you something, if you decide wrong, it will hit you too. You are not going to avoid it either. And if we do not make the right decisions about the waters now, we will all, in this room and outside of this room, we will all watch our children suffer and get sick and die. Do you understand? Water is life. It is our life source. Protect it as though you value your life.
Thank you.
Is there anyone outside that would like to come in and speak?
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Erin Agardy. I'm a resident of Alton County, and I'm just concerned about opening the can of worms by changing the zoning because it's such a, so many uses are allowed. So if, at least if there were an overlay zone or something that could protect the water, I think most people here would feel a lot better about it. Thank you, Erin.
You're fine. No, we don't sign it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Cundy. I live at 1422 East Park Avenue, and I just want to make two points. One is you all are elected officials by us and entrusted to act on our behalf and to provide us information and to work with the development of our town. My taxes have gone up progressively in the last 10 years and especially in the last five years, and it would be tragic if there were, I live on the east side of the town, and if there were contamination, the value of my home and my property that I've invested in for more than 22 years would just dissolve. It's a real risk as we think about where we want to stay, and it's something that I really start to think about. I support everything everybody said. I think that you have been entrusted with one of our most precious resources. Your decision-making will impact the entire community. My second point is this is a public meeting, and there are many people beyond the aqua and beyond other groups that may seem annoying to you at times, but there are people from all over the community. There are 50 people out in the hall who cannot participate in this public meeting. And I think when you have an issue like this and you know how many people are interested and you have 50 people out in the hall, I don't think you are serving us well.
Chris Moody again, apologies to make another comment. I don't think that there's any doubt how important groundwater is, and I'm sure the commissioners, the three of you, don't feel the same way about water that everybody in this room does, okay? What we need to recognize, everybody out there, this and the commission, I think, you guys see it in terms of private property rights. And we need to put those three words in our consciousness when we have a discussion and when we listen to you folks discuss this thing because it's about personal property rights versus the protection and the management of the commons such as a water resource. So everybody, keep in mind, it's about, there needs to be a dialogue about what are personal property rights? How do you land use manage them? Because that's telling people, personal property rights, people what they can do. That's what land use planning is all about. So personal property rights, we need to work that out. What that balances between how someone wants to use their land and propose it versus a common resource that's important to everybody, that's what needs to be worked out. Thank you.
You're good. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I can't hear you.
They're, they're talking to each other across there. I'll ask one more time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Come on up.
My name is Brian Wakeless. I'm at 82 West Lane, Allen County.
Can you speak louder?
I'm, I live in Allen County on the aquifer in the south. I was also on the planning committee for the comprehensive plan in 2000. At that time, we contacted everybody we could. We tried to get a lot of people involved, and one of the things that came from it at the time was to push development away from the sucker town. And if anything, if there was, put it out towards the west, south, to the north, away from the aquifer. Now, very few people spoke against this. In fact, I, right at the moment, I don't remember many people at all. After we were done with all our work and trying to involve the public, certain people on the east side of town who have property up there came out and questioned all the work that we did over a few years of work on this issue. Then, after that, that's when a lot of this information started changing on how we were, if we were going to develop the east side of town. When we came up with our conclusions, it was protect the aquifer. There are many other places to develop. You don't need to go to the east side of town. Okay, that's, that's one point. Now, the other thing I'm thinking is that there, again, there's different ideas on, is it safe to develop this area? Yes, no? Different people have different ideas. I think that we should err on the side of safety in this for the common good of all the people, and until they can prove that it is safe, I think that you should not go ahead with your plan, your plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was hard not to follow Chris Moody and Anna, the conversation that I think is coalescing on the topic of property rights versus protecting the state resource of groundwater, right? We should all, with our wills, get permission to withdraw, but it's the state resource that we're ultimately talking about protecting. Anyway, in regard to planning and zoning authority and personal property rights, when I look at the statute, 18-5-201, authority vested in Board of County Commissioners, it says it is to promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the county. Each Board of County Commissioners may regulate and restrict the location and use of buildings and structures and the use, condition of use or occupancy of lands for residence, recreation, agricultural, excuse me, agriculture, industry, commerce, public use, and other purposes in the unincorporated areas of the county. And there's a whole lot more in the statute, but it's, it's basically saying you, you have the authority to make these decisions. That's why you were able to pass the zoning ordinance. This gave you the authority to pass the zoning ordinance or your zoning resolution. Excuse me, that's the term of our ordinance, zoning documents, is a zoning resolution. And this gave you the authority to do that. And in the authorities described in that zoning resolution, it refers, it refers back to this statute. It also tacks on the purpose of protecting private rights, but it provides no statutory authority by which you are given to do anything about property rights. So this isn't a conundrum. It's clear, you have the authority to make these decisions, notwithstanding public property rights. They've been incorporated in your zoning resolution. You thought about them when you zoned. You thought about it when you created the ATOZ. All those property rights issues were taken into consideration. And so you have before you the ability to promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the county, and that's what your authority is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Taylor, 612 South 8th Street. Just over here. I've been living here for 20 years. I want to support the majority, if not all, of the comments that have been submitted to the matter. I'm part of the mob at the back, so I think if I'm going to speak for the mob, we can raise our hands, but we urge you to take leadership here, protect the aquifer, and oppose this amendment for the future of our community. So if all those agree, and so we, otherwise, we could all, we just could go on for two hours to a three hour. So all those at the back, and that's the majority of them at the back, we oppose this amendment.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this morning? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No, Madam Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to the Walter zoning change, LUC-0719. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment on the Walter zoning change,
Madam Chair, I move we close the Walter zoning change, LUC-0719, public hearing.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, called to order. Commissioner Bothard?
Present.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Here. Do we have any comments from the public? Do we have any comments from the public?
Here. My name is Patrick Sheehy. I live at 603 Mitchell Street, Laramie, apartment number five. I just wanted to inquire, if you can respond, what is the process? Now, you have just finished this hearing, and now there's going to be another hearing, I think, on the zoning change. Is that correct? Could you clarify all that? And then when will the commission make a final decision on these two, these two issues? Thanks.
So we, we did just have a public hearing for the comprehensive plan, so that's, that'll be an action item coming up. And there was a previous public hearing for the zoning change, so the public hearing already happened for the zoning change. And so it is also on the agenda for, because it was tabled at a previous meeting, and that will be up for a decision as well.
Thank you.
So I just, this is Denise Sreler. I would just like to say that in respect to the sweatshirt consideration zoning change that's coming up, some of you like to talk about property rights and your prioritization of that over other things, and I would just like to point out that the property rights of the people who purchase land in the Laramie Plains area are also being affected by this decision. They understood when they purchased those homes that this area was going to be residential, and to change the zoning to a commercial there is affecting their property values and their quality of life. And so that's part of property rights too, and you have to consider those. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public?
Good morning.
I have some comments made concerning the property and everything. My name is Norm Baugh. I live at 2211 30th Avenue. And we've lived in that area since 1976, purchased property in '75. And the view, the property that, that has a direct clear vision or view of the property that's being considered or rezoned. We also have views that extend over to the smirage. We have views that extend up to the whole mountain, and we appreciate that, and that's a reason we selected that, that particular property. We enjoy the open space. We have and enjoy the opportunity to have wildlife, come to our property, play down and rest and feed and whatever I'm needing. We enjoy watching the growing of a twin fawn antelope of the spring and watching them feed, parlay, and enjoy their lives in that area. And that's been that way for many years. Unfortunately, one of those fawns would sit by on my highway, adjacent to the intersection of Blue Bear and Highway. Anyway, that, that has become our lifestyle. That's the reason that we purchased the property, that we built our home, that they raised our family, and that's the kind of lifestyle, and that's the quality of life that we've developed for many years. And surely we would like to continue that for a few more years. Approximately 20 years ago, because of that particular property and the consideration and the way it was being used, I had the opportunity to call the county and visit about how it was being used and how it was classified at that point in that conversation. And I don't recall who it was who was in office at that particular time. And I don't recall who it was who was in office at that particular time. But he indicated to me that there was some uncertainty about the, what that land was supposed to be insured for, how it's supposed to be used. And because I had my property there with clear data, I had photos showing the, the property. And assuming that that would help his recognition or awareness of how it's to be used. And I did not proceed. I'm sure I have photos. It's, it was clear property at that time, just curried. But anyway, I felt that was part of the county's point and kind of response to an understanding of the responsibility. Approximately around that time, we had a neighbor who was interested in building a little building, story building, shop adjacent to our property. And again, that impaired our views and our space and so on. And so my wife and I, along with other community residents up there, used the legal process to try to operate it back in the country. And unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in doing so. And at this point, as I could get to the area, you know, all this, and hundreds of large buildings, various uses. But that again, it's also impacted the value and the quality of life that we have enjoyed. But again, that's, that's why we were there, why we lived there. And that's why we'd like to continue there. I propose to create commercialization or additional commercialization of adjacent property. Certainly, I'm opposed to, because I do feel that would continue to impact the quality of life that we enjoy. I applaud Commissioner Gossart for providing information to, through the claim, concerning this proposal and discussing the whole issue. But one of the statements and sentences that Mr. Gossart used was particularly noble to me. And that was, that the proposed change was that actual commercial does not have to be approved just because it is requested. And that appears that that's the basis, no work to be wrapped today. In this instance, it appears the main emphasis for this consideration is solely based on a requested, a request by one person. And it appears that this request is based on the carpet market, not the consideration of existing environment, lifestyle, and that's currently existing in the immediate area. It appears to me, Mr. Sweper has no connection to the adjoining neighborhood. And what occurs with the property after sale of the property has no impact or relevance to him other than money received and selling. Whereas the ultimate use and development of the property may impact, and I use the word "may," may impact and affect the lifestyle and quality of life and property values of neighboring residents. There's already been an impact for the quality of area through the increased traffic and issues related to the gas station on the corner. It appears to me that the existing lifestyle commitment and demonstrated investment of those residing in the area in the Laramie Plains subdivision, and the quality of life established by those residing in that area should be added over one profit-driven request. Fact should be noted that once the zoning is changed and the property sold, the new owner will be able to proceed to see some spit within the guidelines of the zoning classification. And those living in that area, immediate area, will be given no regard. But again, there appears to be one request for the change and more than one in opposition to the request. So I ask the numbers matter in the process. Does the preserving the savage lifestyle and maintaining the quality of life matter? I'm watching. There definitely is an increased commercialization in the area would affect my quality of life. So I ask you to consider those thoughts.
My eight and five moments. We have lived at 2101 Fairview, which is right across the alley from where this proposal is. And I'm not going to go into any specifics because everybody already knows how I think the property owners feel. And so my greatest prayer is for good people who are in the process of having to decide with input and all of that, to decline the zoning change just to protect our lifestyle. We've been out there for 46 years. And it certainly has changed a lot. And I don't mind some change, but please consider very carefully.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chair, so this is when you're accepting additional permits from the county. Well, I guess first of all, when, when this last came up, December 3rd, I had given you a long, a long thing. I spent some time writing. And I, I just didn't see it in the public records. I wasn't sure why it wasn't included in the batch of documents. So, so anyway, I, just because I worked, I worked hard on it. And I also think I made some reasonable points about.
Who would have been put in with the agenda item from that meeting?
No, I guess I just see the, some of the letters that you've received over time from residency to carry along, like from August to now. Like they, they keep getting bumbled in the, in the hearing.
Did you give it to David?
Oh.
You didn't give it to David.
So David then would, okay. I just, I passed it on to all of you guys. So that next time I'll be clearer about, like, handing them the same, can I please make this part of the public hearing. So at any rate, I guess the issue that I brought up, considering the findings that you have to make that are necessary for approval. One, the first one is the application being provided. You got that. Second, is that it's generally consistent with the Albany County Council's assistance. That's why you had the hearing on that, that has to change to track with the zoning change, even though I would think the company has planned with the heat where commercial goes as opposed to following. But nonetheless, I brought up the issue about traffic concerns in the area. I know you hear a lot of them already because of the redirected high school traffic of people coming, coming from West Laramie and making, taking advantage of the highway and, and going through the neighborhoods there. And I, I had focused on the part that Randy Gricebach wrote in his email about access points not being, meeting the standards and creating a potential dangerous situation as well as a long list of negative outcomes that come from not following highway access recommendations. So it, it sounded like everybody was happy to hang their hat on the first part of his email that said basically, you know, no, no comment on the zone change. So I, I followed up with him with a phone call because knowing how he feels about like the entryway on Third Street where Bosser comes in right away, where the highway department has, they seem to care a lot about how development happens in the city in these places where access isn't good. So, so I called him on December 12th. And I, I asked him about this and he said, the reason he stated that he has no comment on the zone change is that he typically never comments on zone changes. That's not in his purview. He can't comment until you give him a site plan for what's going to go in there. So he's, he's saying basically, I have no comment on the zone change because it's, it's not my purview to comment yet. I comment when I get the site plan. And when I get the site plan, say for a mobile home park, then he would start saying, oh, you might need a traffic light here. You know, you'll, you'll want to see the certain number of traffic departures per hour that triggers a risk. And so he said that stuff would happen when the commercial development happens. Like a truck stop, for instance, would probably require widening and different curves, he said. So I, I feel like you're overlooking the potential traffic impact of this area. I, I further asked Mr. Gricebach about what could be done. They won't do the traffic impact study at this point. That's not their job. But you could ask the applicant to do a traffic impact study. For example, if it is, becomes a mobile home park, we don't know. The applicant has never said what he intends to do. You could find out what the, what the impact is going to be to the neighborhood. You could have a real on the ground idea. In, in fact, you can call up the highway department and I don't know if you guys asked your, your county planner to look into traffic data, but you can call up YDOT and ask them to tabulate ID crashes between Grand Avenue and, and Golden Drive on the segment of, of Grand Avenue. And you can watch how, when the high school opened, you start to see a ticking up in the numbers and a change in the numbers. We've had a high there of damage crashes of 26 in 2017. Compare that to 2011 where there were only nine. I mean, what I'm saying is you don't know. These numbers could mean nothing. I mean, it could be random or it could be related to the high school traffic. But you're, you're about to make a decision on a commercial zoning change that could change the traffic pattern without having any idea what it's gonna, what it's gonna look like in that neighborhood. So I, I just think you're rushing ahead here. And again, I, I think the, the conservation overlay zone clearly carves this out as an area that's not intended to be changed.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for clarification, Ms. White, Jackie Gonzalez, County Clerk's Office, it was made part of the record, those comments on December 3rd. It was included in the record for the county commissioners. But we now are forwarding it over to Mr. Gerch. So we asked it as well.
Thank you very much. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I would like to ask the commissioners, do you have any disclosures for today?
The three. I have none.
And I have none. We have consideration of changes to be agenda. Madam Chair, I do have one matter, two matters I'd like to take care of on the agenda. First, I would like to add to your agenda, Resolution 2020-004. And I apologize for the lateness of this item. It came to my attention of this issue yesterday afternoon. And so I wanted to make sure we got this on your agenda. And that is to retain outside counsel related to some litigation involving Lake Hattie, which I will go into later. At this point, I disseminated a resolution, but I subsequently learned when Mr. Brown walked in that he has a conflict of interest and cannot represent the county. So I have been diligently trying to find other counsel right now because of the immediate nature of this resolution and this issue. So hopefully by the time this comes up for discussion, I will have alternate counsel. If not, we'll just proceed forward. Another item for your agenda, I'd like to remove your Laramie Cares Agreement. You had previously approved that on your December 17 meeting, I believe. There's more items that we needed to add to it, and it is not ready for your consideration at this time. That would be item number?
Eleven.
And then in addition, we have a letter of support for the Department of Health to apply for a SANSI grant for additional funding for a juvenile drug court. I have now subsequently prepared a resolution which I will print and disseminate when we get to that item as well. I'm going to collect the Pioneer Canal Lake Hattie Irrigation District discussion right above item six in the regular agenda. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent proposal as per second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to the Pioneer Canal Lake Hattie Irrigation District discussion. Madam Chair, by the way, I address the commission. You have before you a Resolution 2020-004 for the Albany County Prosecuting Attorney's Office to retain outside counsel. I'm, just to provide an update to you, what has transpired within the past 24 hours is that my office, myself, had learned of a petition for rehearing filed. Let me back up. Back in 2016, there was litigation that was filed involving the, and I may not be as eloquent on water law, but this is a water law issue, pertaining to the Lake Hattie and the amount of the water that is, I'm giving this a layman's term, amount of water in the reservoir. And essentially, the landowners who reside along that lake had filed litigation against the irrigation district of Pioneer Canal Lake Hattie Irrigation District. And at that time, there was concern that they were trespassing water because of the, when they would allow more water into that lake, it would trespass upon their property. I did attend and was concerned at that time in 2016, the injunction action that transpired up in Casper in federal court and US District Court at that time. Injunction was not granted as a result of that, and this case proceeded through litigation all the way up to where a decision was made by the US District Court. And recently, there was a decision made on December 13th by the Tenth Circuit where it got appealed up to that has concerns, and I'm bringing this to your attention as the county commissioners, because it will change the boundaries of the bodies of the water as a result of that decision. Specifically, the irrigation district loses its ability to store over 80% of the water rights in Lake Hattie reservoir. Thereby, that reservoir becomes unusable because if the lake cannot rebuild its capacity, the salt accumulates at the outlet works, making the lower portions of that lake almost impossible to use alone. Further, the conveyance loss, which now is reduced to 20% of water to the lake, would mean that most of the water would never get there because of that conveyance loss. Hence, the concern right now is flooding here in the city of Laramie. The Tenth Circuit Court decision affects the ability of your emergency management for Albany County and the city of Laramie to work with the irrigation district to eliminate, modify, or minimize the risk of flooding that occurs on limited, on Laramie River by limiting the irrigation district diverting. Currently, our emergency management is, has a relationship with the irrigation district, where we contact them frequently when we have flooding on Laramie River in order to divert that water to relieve those businesses from flooding and the impact that we see west of town and through the Laramie River. Right now, this is a concern. Like I said, I've been following this litigation since 2016. It will have an effect, this decision, on our community. Therefore, I am requesting funds to Therefore, I am requesting funds to secure outside counsel to file an amicus brief. There is a petition right now by the irrigation district to have it reheard by the Tenth Circuit, Tenth Circuit Court. That was filed on December twenty-seventh. And now we have a deadline of January thirteenth to file an amicus brief. As we are speaking right now, it's my understanding that counsel for the irrigation district has also reached out to the AG's office over in the state of Wyoming to also see if they are amenable of filing an amicus brief. It's also at this point that it is important that the county also join in and either joining in or filing our own brief based on our own concerns of flooding. With that said, I have reached out to Kermit Brown, who has experience in this area of water rights, but I just learned he had a conflict of interest. With that, I am now reaching out to other outside councils. So what I would propose to leave this blank as outside counsel and give me the authority. Any funding that we would need to pay for counsel, it's my intent to reach out. My understanding, there is a natural resource fund through the state of Wyoming that I would attempt to get funding to reimburse the county for this. I will tell you, a water rights lawyer, just to have an idea, ranges from anywhere from three hundred to five hundred dollars an hour. This is a very specialized area of law. So with that said, I would respectfully request that you authorize me to hire outside counsel to address this issue. And I believe we have members from the irrigation district here that may want to also address the court, address the court, address the commissioners as well.
I might understand this ruling, dry up Lake Hattie.
Correct. From a recreational standpoint, you know, our immediate concern is the flooding in Laramie. But yes, you're recreational. There will have effects on that as well.
This is a rhetorical question. Why would anyone petition to dry up what gives their land value?
In due respect to those other litigants and the homeowners surrounding the lake, their position, I don't believe, was to result in the decision. And no disrespect to the Tenth Circuit Court. The Tenth Circuit Court went a direction opposite than what the parties, I believe, had argued at that time. So at this point, I just believe that that's why the request of the irrigation district in a rehearing and making them aware of Wyoming State Supreme Court cases. The unfortunate is this was filed in federal court instead of state court. And that's where we're having that disconnect, in all due respect to all parties and the court.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So if the state was going to file that brief, would it be your recommendation to just join that brief? Or do you think we should file our own brief separately?
I believe you should file your brief separately. Our focus is on flooding and the emergency, although the state also would protect our interests. I believe this is, I've been following this since sixteen. This is a paramount concern to our community, and that's flooding. And if we are unable to divert water, and we've been fortunate, the irrigation district, along with Weaver, irrigation have always worked with us as a group. And I'm not sure we have a formal agreement. It's just been, they've always worked with us in this regard. I have concerned more voices that are speaking out and making it known to the Tenth Circuit about the situation and the effect of their decision is very paramount. But, you know, I understand financially, this is a lot of money to our community. If it was more time, and I can tell you, I'm even getting turned out by large firms that do water right law because of the short timeframe. If all comes down to, and I can't, aren't located attorney, we will have to join in to make our voice known. But I believe, I even thought about, because I am licensed in the Tenth Circuit doing it myself, but I would prefer, you know, to have that guidance from an expert.
Thank you.
So at this time, would any of the members of the Pioneer Canal Irrigation District like to come up and make any comments? Good morning, Cody.
Good morning. I'm Cody Humphrey, co-owner of Nine H Ranch. We're a member of the district, also the chairman of the Water District. I guess if we've seen today how important water is. We've been put in a position, we're about to lose huge storage right in Lake Hattie. Went from ninety-six thousand acre feet of storage to about twelve thousand. At twelve thousand, it's not even worth the district.
Can you, I have a question. Can you get twelve thousand out of the lake through the spillway, or is it stagnant?
It's gonna be hard. Usually what happens is you get, there's current in that lake. It brings silt right to the headgates. With that amount of water, all it does is flood the pipes. The water rights on Hattie are not the best, so it's in best interest of any guy you have a chance to store as much water as you can, because it might be several years before you get it again. That's what the plaintiffs really don't understand about this.
Well, it's very involved.
There's a lot to it. So if it's a huge deal, as far as our ranch, it's devastating to use that water.
Yeah, the only way to fill Lake Hattie is with surplus water, because when the water precipitation is down, down river, everybody gets the rights. So basically, the only time to fill it is during flood protection downstream.
Yeah, you've got a whole system. You've got, Wheatland has three reservoirs, Gray Rock, Palm Springs, Nebraska. You've got a certain amount of that happen before it comes back to Lake Hattie.
Yep.
So when you have the opportunity, they're taking it. So that's what we've been fighting for.
So this impacts agriculture, emergency management, because we need to have that water for fires, as well as flood control, recreation, wildlife.
Well, last year, we were pulling off eight hundred CFS off the river, to help keep it down, keep it flooding, flooding the water. Yeah, we worked really closely with the county. We try not to pull, we try to save room in the reservoir for when the peak of the river's gone, that we can pull it to help save water. Yeah, it's a big deal. I just want to thank you guys for considering following the brief.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, Glenn Moniz, Twenty-nine fifty Riverside Drive. I'm here today representing the Senator, Senator Kim, representing both the Senate and Albany County, here to support units doing that public ministry. It's important about what the county does, and we're trying to get the state to do that as well. I'm in the process now, working with the Wyoming Water Development Commission.